Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us. We've obviously had a little bit of a change venue with the air conditioning beyond the fritz, so apologize for the short notice, but the air conditioner just does that to you sometimes. So we will have an invocation offered tonight by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting tonight, give us guidance and wisdom to make proper decisions. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So I'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Cresser, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of July 25, 2016. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine, I mean, Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the minutes of the July 25 meeting in dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any of our regular business items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your questions Seeing no one stepping forward to the microphone, we will turn to a public hearing regarding the renaming of Grant Street to Orlando Pace Drive. And who on staff is presenting your handling of that hearing? Mr. Klein, good evening. I should note, ladies and gentlemen, that though there is not a video recording this evening, there is an audio recording, and that was the best we could do on about three hours' notice.
Okay, so the city commission received a letter from the Sandusky City School Board requesting the city to rename Grant Street between Hayes Avenue and Camp Street to Orlando Pace Drive in order to honor one of Sandusky City Schools' outstanding graduates, Orlando Pace. The renaming of the street was discussed at a public board meeting held by the school board on Tuesday, June 7, 2016, where there was unanimous consent to move forward with the request of renaming Grant Street to honor Orlando Pace. They stated in a letter to the city, "All board members acknowledge the outstanding community treasure that is Orlando Pace and are in full support of the renaming of this street in his honor." If this becomes effective, it would be October 6, and it would only affect two property owners. One property owner has asked that their address be redone to Hayes Avenue instead of Orlando Pace Drive. The other one is the medical building behind the Mexican restaurant there. So a little bit about Orlando Pace. Trust me, this is not off the top of my head. In 1994, Orlando Pace graduated from Sandusky High School and attended Ohio State University to play college football as a left tackle and was the second true freshman to ever start at Ohio State. He won the Outland Trophy for the best college football interior lineman in 1996 and the Lombardi Award for the best college lineman or linebacker in 1995 and 1996. He finished fourth for the Heisman Trophy, which is virtually unheard of for an offensive lineman. He's also credited with the new statistical category, the pancake block. Mr. Pace was inducted into the Rose Bowl Hall of Fame in 2013 and was selected to the College Football All-Century Team. In 1997, Mr. Pace was drafted by the then St. Louis Rams as the first overall pick. He was the first lineman to be selected number one overall in 29 years. Over a 13-year career with the Rams and Bears, he was named All-Pro five times, selected to the Pro Bowl seven times, All-Decade Team, and wears a huge ring for winning Super Bowl XXXIV. On Friday, he gave a beautifully emotional speech at the Hall of Fame ceremony as he was being inducted as part of the class of 2016. Locally, however, Mr. Pace has donated a substantial amount of money for a variety of things, including a park on Wamajoe Drive named Orlando Pace Park. He was a 1993 USA Today High School All-American and first-team All-Ohio in football. Mr. Pace was simply a pure athlete, as he also lettered in basketball for the Blue Streaks. Maybe a little less significant of a feat, I would like to add, Mr. Pace blocked my only three-point attempt in high school. [laughter] As he took one step from the lane and batted it into the front row. So the effective date of October 6 would be in correlation with Orlando Pace Day.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Klein or comments? Mrs. Cresser, I understand that there was one property owner who had, who inquired about this, but you had some subsequent conversations, and they were satisfied.
Yes, and I apologize, Aaron was on vacation last week, and I have not spoken with him yet today, but the property owner that you mentioned, Mr. and Mrs. Pajali, they have resolved that with the United States Post Office, and they have no objection to the renaming of the street.
Good, thank you.
I would like to add as well that we have spoken to both EMS services and the city to make sure that they would not have a problem responding to them on Hayes Avenue.
Further questions or comments from the commission? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the issue? If so, please step to the microphone. Seeing no one moving forward, this hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, we have several communications in our packet. We're recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those communications?
Full move.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcel number 58-01725.000 located at 1314 Prospect Street from our 2F, 2-family residential district to public facilities district, and this is a second reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item two is an ordinance providing for the submission to the commission, I'm sorry, to the electors of the city of Sandusky, proposed amendments to the Charter of the city of Sandusky to allow a city commissioner member to serve 12 years in a 16-year period of time, and when a city commission member fills an unexpired term of less than two years, said time shall not be included in the 12-year calculation, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication on a second reading, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at second reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I might ask, are Section 14, please, this is a second reading, this is, we're looking at a second reading, it should be under...
This is a second reading.
Section 14?
Yes.
Right.
To take effect today?
Yes.
Second reading, does it take effect today?
It would, except this technically is a second reading, so it would not take effect.
That's fine. Okay.
Yeah.
No.
Hold on a second.
That's fine.
Mr. Harris?
It needs to be submitted under Section 14 of the Charter today, even though it's a second reading, simply because in order to get it on the ballot.
Okay, gotcha.
So the motion needs to be...
If you want it to stay second reading, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at second reading under Section 14 of the city charter.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you all for getting that important piece right. Discussion. Oh, please, go ahead. I just want to thank Mr. Harris and Mr. Poole for pointing out that we had a discussion two weeks ago about passing this single issue. Mr. Poole briefed out Mr. Harris, who quickly put together the legislation in the format that I believe the commission intended, so thank you all for that quick work. Mr. Lockhart?
Okay. You know, I was in favor of the original legislation where we would allow someone serving an unexpired term to go ahead and serve two terms of their own, and that seems to be, it makes much more sense. But serving a third term, I think that the people that I've spoken to in the city are against having a third term for us. I think they feel like they've already voted on that, and it's not beneficial to them in the majority. And secondly, we have a school board issue coming up, and this could play a heavy part in that school board issue. You know, the school board's bringing up, I think, a 70, correct of our own, $70 million issue here, and I don't want there to be any confusion or anything that would disturb that, because that's one of the most important things that's going to happen to the city coming up. So I don't know how everyone else feels, but I'm certainly going to have to vote no on this, from what I've heard.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I'm still in support of it. I know that the school issue is very, very important. I think with the proper communication to our residents, just announcing what's going on and what's on the ballot, it still gives them the option to choose, so I'll still be voting yes.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Of all people, I'm very sensitive to the issue and the school board being able to pass, schools being able to pass the bond issue. It's certainly something that is the subject of a great deal of discussion and hope in my household. I think the local portion, if I remember correctly, is about $35 million for the bond issue, and then the state actually matches about almost two-thirds of that, so it's incredibly important for our community. I don't think it would have a negative effect on the bond issue. In fact, on a lot of different scenarios, it would be a positive issue because it would get potentially more people to come out and vote, but that's a lot of guesswork. Whatever impact this particular issue may have in connection with another issue on the ballot, it will be but the smallest puff of wind in a mailstorm that's going to be on the ballot this fall in terms of the presidential election, so I feel pretty comfortable moving this forward anyway, seeing light of that particular concern. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Waddington?
I also, I work for the schools, but I don't think this will have the impact, because it's no tax money coming out of this. It's just changing from eight years to 12 years, sitting out, and I believe I mentioned at the last commission meeting, we've had basically revolving door, people dropping off for various reasons, and then you have to get a replacement person. I was supportive of the original idea, but the three term that Mr. Poole brought up, I think's fine, it's not going to have any effect on the taxes, and I agree with what you said, folks getting out to vote for the school, I will also look at this. I think it'll be a positive in November.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lockhart?
In the, what we have, and I don't know if it's been rewritten, but we have included both the first, the first idea of having an unexpired term filled, and then the second idea or amendment Mr. Poole made was to extend the terms to three terms. Now, is that still both, are they both still included in this ordinance? I may, Mr. Harris may have answered that, I'm not sure, because they were still rewriting this if I...
I believe that that is correct. Mr. Harris, could you confirm that?
Yeah. The motion, the original legislation as proposed at the last meeting dealt with filling an unexpired term. That motion was never withdrawn, or that amendment was never redrawn, and Commissioner Poole made an amendment to include that, because the consensus was to keep that in form still with the Constitution. We talked about unexpired terms, and the motion was made to amend it to add a third term for 12 to 16 years. So as it's presented now, it's one question, basically asking constituents and the voters to vote on a third term, and when calculated, it was 12 years, not penalize a commissioner who later on fills an unexpired term of less than two years.
So then it would be 14 years altogether, if someone served an unexpired term?
It's possible.
So that would go, so that would go well beyond even a third term essentially?
No.
Two years. If someone, yeah, my point is, if someone came in on an unexpired term for two years and then decided that they were going to serve three terms, they would be in office for 14 years, and I don't think the voters would go for that. I don't think they want that.
Well, I would say that that's a mathematical possibility, but the voters have always retained the ability to turn anyone who was out, as they have in years past, and that is the principal argument against term limits anywhere in the country, that it's simply undemocratic interference with the voter's ability to choose who they want in office. I think we've seen over the last 20 years quite a number of commissioners, Sydney commissioners, turned out when they made a bid for reelection, so I think the voters are pretty shrewd, they pay pretty close attention, and I think that this, the way I perceive this, and I understand the opposing viewpoint, and I respect that, but the way I see this, this is allowing the voters to do what they want to do, instead of the dead hand from the past saying, no, no, you guys can't pick who you want anymore, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
As we've added a new information dealing with the school board, the fact that it's not a money issue, and it seems that the, that I have not heard anyone that, anyone at the board, at the table here, that's, you folks have got experience in politics, that this should not affect the school board issue. I think the school board issue is probably one of the most important things that we, that's coming up for Sandusky over the, at this election, because the, our overall goal, ours and the school boards', is that we have to have people move here to the community. And quality schools, the belief that we have, that we support our schools totally, is extremely important. I truly hope that this issue does not negatively impact that. I can't believe that the voters are not, I do believe the voters recognize that they are two completely different issues that deal with different things, so absent any strong suggestion, which I've had none from the community, that this actually will negatively impact the school. I think what we're offering the city, the citizens today, is an opportunity to improve the decision-making that we make at this board, having more experienced people that remember the mistakes that were made before them, I think is very important, and I'm hoping that the citizens will see that and agree with us and vote both issues forward. So I'm going to continue to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I voted no on the amendment at the first reading, and my reasons for, I believe it should go through to the Charter Review Commission for providing three terms for all commissioners. I believe that there are checks and balances in place with government, and I believe that our Charter Review Commission is a check and balance for how these things go forward. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't have a problem with a third term for someone that filled an unexpired term, because I think what we would want for somebody to fill an unexpired term, someone that's civic-minded and business-minded, and they should not be penalized from running for two terms if they're filling an unexpired term. So as this amendment is currently, I will again vote no. As far as the voters and the schools levy, I think the schools levy is very, very important for our city, for all the things that we're trying to do for our city. People who look to move to different areas look at the schools and the strength of those schools, so I think that's very important, and I wouldn't want this type of ballot language to negatively impact the schools levy. Also, a comment about term limits. I think there are arguments on both sides, and I don't expect us to resolve that argument at this table, but I do want to make mention and comment that in smaller communities, sometimes term limits have a negative impact on minorities that might want to run for elected office, so I do want to make that comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
If I thought for one minute that these two issues were tied together and that it would provide any negative impact on what is probably the most important levy for a school system in the last 100 years to our city, I would certainly not support the legislation before us. I do not believe that they are mutually exclusive. I think that our voters are sophisticated enough to know that they're voting on an increase in a term limit, and I believe they're educated enough to know that they're voting on a school levy. I appreciate Commissioner Twine and Commissioner Lockhart's position on this. I just respectfully disagree with the fact that they are at all tied together.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I just want to say that I respect Commissioner Twine's opinion on the Charter Review, but I would like to just inform the residents and voters that I served on the Charter Review Committee this past year, and this did get brought up, the term limits, and majority did feel that extending term limits, they were in support of it, just a decision didn't, we didn't come to a decision as to whether to make it 12, 12 years out of 16 years, or to make it unlimited and, or not have any term limits at all. So that's the only reason it didn't get brought to commission, but majority did feel that eight out of 12 was too restrictive, but couldn't come to terms. So I do believe that the last Charter Review Committee would support what we're doing, so that's why I feel confident in supporting this issue, and I would hope that the next one would if this didn't happen, but I also think that we should put it in the hands of the voters, and we are, so they're still going to have a say. And in the thoughts of term limits, extending term limits could have a negative effect, I think that we still need to respect our voters and have confidence in them to choose the best person for the job.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the legislation, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That legislation passes on second reading and subject to the, obviously, the voters deciding what their will is. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number three, please?
Yes, item three would be a first reading on an ordinance changing the name of Grant Street, extending from Hayes Avenue to Camp Street in the city to Orlando Pace Drive.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at first reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I didn't get a chance to go to camp, but I watched Orlando and the rest of the inductees on the Hall of Fame, and what he said about growing up in Sandusky, his mom working two jobs, he's in the Hall of Fame, his mom belongs in the Hall of Fame. I mean, that's a great, that made the hair on my back stand up. I mean, that, wow. You know, his biggest moment, and then if it wasn't for his mother in Sandusky, working two jobs over behind the radio station, correct? Am I in the town?
American Corian.
I mean, just think about that. And we complain when we have a bad day, working an extra hour. Lot to be said for that.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Poole?
Mr. Klein read all the reasons that we should want to honor this gentleman, and I'm just pleased to be able to vote for it.
Further questions or comments? Well, it's great that we get to honor one of Sandusky's own, a real great in so many different ways, and I'm not going to add to all that, the papers have added to it, he's said it himself, and Mr. Klein recounted all that very eloquently, so it's a great thing that we're able to have him back here in our community to celebrate him on October 6, too. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item number four, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item four is a resolution approving and accepting certain real property for acquisition into the land utilization program, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution. We should have the suspension of rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Again, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. As you saw in your packets, Maru's Development LLC submitted an application for a local landmark designation. You also remember in Section eleven sixty-one oh six that we passed a few months ago, the chapter specifies criteria for landmark, a local landmark designation. This criteria includes making sure that the property has an association to a significant person, location, or aspects of cultural, political, or economic heritage to our community, or state, or nation. The criteria also reviews the architectural style and prominence to our, the neighborhood. The application provided a detailed report, as Mr. Waddington stated, indicating the history of the building and explaining why that building meets the criteria referenced in Section eleven sixty-one oh six. As you know, the West Brothers and the Kingsbury Building had a great impact on the city of Sandusky. The historic integrity of this building is also important to the neighborhood. By retaining the Kingsbury Building, as well as the Commercial Bank and Trust Company on the east side of Columbus Avenue, this area will be preserved. Staff believes that the existing building is an important piece to Sandusky's history and meets the criteria specified in Section eleven sixty-one. Staff actually brought this to Planning Commission on July twenty-seventh, or, excuse me, the Landmarks Commission, which also operates as our planning commission, and they unanimously approved it. Staff does believe that localing and landmarking this building will assist in preserving an important piece of our downtown fabric, as well as opening the door to a possible financial incentive to renovate the building, and by the way, of state and historic tax credits.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Questions or comments of Ms. Sparks, or generally question or comments, but we'll propose legislation.
Mr. Congressman, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
I'm happy to see that this building is, meets the criteria to be, to be designated, be landmarked, and hopefully it will be repurposed. Just for clarification, there's a great deal of, of other activity going on that talks about turning this into perhaps condominiums, or even the city building moving in there. I'm not at this point on board with the concept of moving City Hall anyplace downtown. I'm not sure that operationally it, it, that it's, is good for the downtown. I look forward to the public meeting we have next week, and perhaps I'll be convinced otherwise. But I want to be sure that the public doesn't think that this landmarking is just the next step toward going the eventuality of something else that we have not fully researched.
I think that's absolutely correct, but Poole, these are separate issues.
They're separate issues.
And this is, I, I think it's also important to note, and one of the reasons that, as I understand it, we are passing this as a version of legislation, is that there is a deadline by which the owner must apply for a sort of tax credit, otherwise they'd miss that window, and so we'd miss another six months' opportunity to get some activity going on in this building.
That's correct.
So I think that should be part of the record as well. Further questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
Thank you.
For the history, it was really interesting to read about it and to read about the architecture of the building. It is an unsightly building. I'm looking at a picture of it now at the moment, and it's been unsightly for most of my whole life. And to read about all that, see what it was, and what it could be again someday, was actually pretty interesting. So, thank you. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item five is an ordinance approving the Sandusky Landmark Commission's designation of the Kingsbury Building located at two thirty-eight to two forty Columbus Avenue, parcel number five six dash zero one zero six eight dot zero zero zero, Sandusky, Ohio, as a local landmark, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion to second. Discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance itself?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Item number nine is an ordinance authorizing the finance director to designate the Civista Banking Company, Fifth Third Bank, PNC Bank, US Bank, and First National Bank as depositories of the active and interim deposits of the city of Sandusky, Ohio, for the period commencing August twenty-three, two thousand and sixteen, through August twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
It's been a motion to second. Discussion? Mrs. Klein, since you're there, anything to add? This is, represents the savings on the Surf Stop property that was a contingency we didn't fully have to draw down, so it's good news. All right. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Item number ten A is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend the necessary funds for the emergency repair work to be performed at the wastewater treatment plant by GS Engine Power Incorporated of Mineral Ridge, Ohio, in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
It's been a motion to second. Discussion? Mrs. Klein, I think we need your assistance in walking through this legislation. I know you highlighted this at the last meeting, indicating that we have some pretty significant problems, and, and you built in, at least some of this into the budget. But this came upon us a little bit sooner than we had anticipated, as I recall, so you could help us and the public understand the importance of this and how it is that we come to be at this point. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have our primary pumping system and a backup pumping system. The primary system consists of this combination fuel engine that runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it actually runs off the methane at the plant, so that we can save money on electricity, which is very important. Right now, well, we've known for about two or three years that we were going to need to start rebuilding or planning to rebuild this. It's been in our capital budget, but it hasn't been a project that we've been able to do. So when it went down earlier this year, it wasn't a surprise, and the good thing was, was that we did have a hundred thousand dollars set aside in the capital budget and programmed in the rate increases as well. So when, when the director out there, Jeff Minor, started getting costs, he was very diligent about making sure that he got three estimates, not only for the engine rebuild, but also for the pump rebuild. And he was very particular about exactly what was needed and how he could save money. Instead of buying a whole new pump, he's going to rebuild the pump and buy a new impeller, keep the old impeller, and use it in the future if we have a problem. So he was, he's being very responsible out there about exactly what he felt could be done and, and should be done with this equipment. So both the pump and the engine are currently off-site, being worked on already. As an emergency situation, we, we felt that it was very important that these things get back operational as quickly as possible. We don't have a date as to when they'll return, but both companies are currently working on them. And it's actually good that they're working on them now, because with the grit tank project going on, they would be in each other's way, because they're in the same location as some other equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion in connection with item number ten A?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance itself?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Item number nine, please. Item nine is an ordinance authorizing the finance director to designate the Civista Banking Company, Fifth Third Bank, PNC Bank, US Bank, and First National Bank as depositories of the active and interim deposits of the city of Sandusky, Ohio, for the period commencing August twenty-three, two thousand and sixteen, through August twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion to second. Discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number ten, please.
Item ten A is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend the necessary funds for the emergency repair work to be performed at the wastewater treatment plant by G.S. Engine Power Incorporated of Mineral Ridge, Ohio, in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, I think we need your assistance in walking through this legislation. I know you highlighted this at the last meeting, indicating that we have some pretty significant problems, but you built in at least some of this into the budget. But this came upon us a little bit sooner than we had anticipated, as I'm recalling. So if you could help us and the public understand the importance of this and how it is that we come to be at this point, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have our primary pumping system and a backup pumping system. The primary system consists of this combination fuel engine that runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it actually runs off the methane at the plant so that we can save money on electricity, which is very important. Right now, well, we've known for about two or three years that we were going to need to start rebuilding or planning to rebuild this. It's been in our capital budget, but it hasn't been a project that we've been able to do. So when it went down earlier this year, it wasn't a surprise, and the good thing was was that we did have a hundred thousand dollars set aside in the capital budget and programmed in the rate increases as well. So when, when the director out there, Jeff Minor, started getting costs, he was very diligent about making sure that he got three estimates, not only for the engine rebuild, but also for the pump rebuild, and he was very particular about exactly what was needed and how he could save money. Instead of buying a whole new pump, he's going to rebuild the pump and buy a new impeller, keep the old impeller, and use it in the future if we have a problem. So he was, he's being very responsible out there about exactly what he felt could be done and should be done with this equipment. So both the pump and the engine are currently off-site, being worked on already. As an emergency situation, we've, we felt that it was very important that these things get back operational as quickly as possible. We don't have a date as to when they'll return, but both companies are currently working on them, and it's actually good that they're working on them now because with the grit tank project going on, they would be in each other's way because they're in the same location as some other equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion in connection with item number ten A?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item ten B, the pump side of this equation?
Yes, this is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend the necessary funds for the emergency repair work to be performed at the wastewater treatment plant by Damon Industrial Services Incorporated of East Brady, Pennsylvania, in the amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, I know you're still at the podium, this is just the, we, we, ten A was the engine, and ten B is the pump that the engine runs. Unless there are questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed two thousand and sixteen street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you might take a moment to address how it is that these particular streets were selected. I'm assuming, would appreciate your verifying that, that our street condition report is the principal guiding, determining, determiner, and I very much appreciate the fact that we are really now getting far into individual neighborhoods and repaving those streets that, as your communication indicates, have been neglected for twenty years or more.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Looking at the, the streets that were on the list, there were many that we could have chosen. So what we tried to do is we tried to select several streets in the same neighborhood and the same few blocks so we could expend the money in the most cost-effective manner. If, if you choose streets scattered throughout the city, then you're going to be paying a lot more cost on mobilization and the contractor on gas and things like that. So what we did is we looked at, at what we had, and, and the blocks on Franklin Street that we chose were both ranked as zero. The block on McKinley was a nine, the, the two on Bell were fives and elevens, and this is out of a hundred. So these streets, all of these streets in this area, and we added Bell to it because it was shorter and we could keep it within the budget, even though that's not right next to all of these. We, we chose all these streets because they were in that area, and they were all under that ten range, and they were all high priorities. So that's what we've done, is we've been looking at over the years what we're going to do over the next three, four, or five years to establish exactly which streets we're going to do and how we group them together. And obviously, some of the streets that are on the list, you're looking at, at streets like McCartney, we have work that we need to do out there as far as sewers and waterlines and, and looking at those types of things first with the Venice Road Lift Station. And there's other streets that with the capital planning, with the five-year capital plan, we felt that we might need to move back a little bit. Gartland, for example, that's a big overhaul that we couldn't fit into the timeframe right now that we have for the remainder of the year. So these streets were the, the important ones that, that we got to right now. Now, one more thing that I would like to add, if I may, I, I did a little bit of, of math here this afternoon to look at what we are spending on, on several streets, on the streets that we're doing this year. And the streets I'm looking at are Fifth, Caldwell, the entire length of Caldwell, and then the resurfacing, and that comes to three hu, or eight hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, which I know during the issue eight, we talked, you know, we would be putting this, this type of money towards that. But we use that eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, that's local funds, CDBG, issue eight money, things like that, and we leveraged actually up to one point two million. So there's an extra three hundred and eighteen to three hundred and twenty thousand that we leveraged using these funds. And if we keep getting low bids like we did for Caldwell and, and Fifth Street, then hopefully we can carry that money into the future, and we're looking at, at some really big streets next year so we could really use this money to go towards those.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. I believe, uh, Aaron said McKinley, that's where I looked, McKel, McKell, it's not McKinley, is it?
McKelvy, sorry. Did I say McKinley?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did I hear that right, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Coffee was good.
No blacktop for you, bud.
I did tell you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number twelve, please.
Item twelve is an ordinance authorizing the city's participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Ralston, I see you're approaching the podium and appreciate you're being here to walk us through these two related pieces of legislation, item twelve and item thirteen, one being the funding and, and the other the purchase. So if you would explain that to the commissioners and the public, I'd appreciate it.
As for you, Mr. President, um, these ordinances are very much related. One allows us to purchase the vehicles, and the other one allows us to actually pay for the vehicles. So the crux of this is that our vehi, our fleet is really, really old. The average vehicle miles that we're going to be replacing with these new vehicles are two hundred and eighteen thousand miles, which is recommended replacement is a hundred and fifty thousand miles. We spent almost sixty thousand dollars on maintaining the vehicles that we're going to replace just so far in two thousand and sixteen. So next year, when we get these new vehicles, we expect a drastic reduction in our maintenance costs, which will help preserve us in the future. This opportunity provides us with a hundred percent match from ODOT, so there's no city money involved with the purchase of these nine vehicles, which total cost is about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So when we get these vehicles in our fleet, our fleet will be more efficient, more cost-effective, and will provide better service.
So it's clear to the folks who are listening to this, we're talking about the Sandusky Transit Vehicles?
Yes.
And the legislation that we have, communication in front of us, indicates that one is, one is a smaller bus, and the other vehicles are all vans, correct?
Yeah, um, we're going to purchase a twelve-passenger bus, which is a cutaway vehicle. You see them around town, that's basically what our fleet is made up of right now. But the eight vehicles will be smaller vehicles, that'll be about forty percent more fuel-efficient and much less expensive to operate going forward, and a better fit for the type of service we provide, because we don't really pick up twelve people at a time, we pick them up in ones and twos. And so by having these smaller vehicles in our fleet, it helps us reduce costs.
Thank you. Questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Ralston.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one light transit wide-body vehicle from Transportation Equipment Sales Corporation of Oregon, Ohio, and eight accessible vans from American Bus and Accessories Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that concludes our regular items of business, and we turn the floor over now to Mr. Wolfser for his city manager's report.
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening, audience. I'll start with donations. We have two donations tonight. The first is a forty-dollar donation to the Millskey Creek Golf Course from the Soloway famo, family, in memory of William Emmett Stahl, father of Finance Committee member Craig Stahl, who recently passed away. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved without thanks.
Okay. The second donation, I'd ask for a donation is... Oh, is that, okay, I thought somebody was talking to me. That's not in my head, is it? Okay. Because I gotta take some medication. The second donation I would ask for is a twenty-dollar donation from Kalen Joseph Voight for the Sandusky Fire Department in memorial of Bob Beatty. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved without thanks.
Okay. Here. I'll try, I'll do my best to speak up, I apologize. Moving on to new business, starting with the police department, is that better for everyone? Okay. The Touch a Truck event was very well-attended, with thousands there. We want to give a special thanks to Victoria Kurt, Eva Olcott, Kelly Cromer, and Diane Mulvan for their efforts in planning, organizing, and implementing another successful year. Victoria has committed to making it bigger and better next year, so I want to give a big thank, uh, thanks to Chief Orzek, Chief Dagnin, Victoria, and everyone else, the sponsors, participants, and citizens that attended the event. I know I saw several commissioners and staff there, and it was, uh, it's pretty amazing to see how much momentum that that has created over the last several years, uh, and I want to commend everybody who was a part of that and thank them as we look to making it a better event next year. Moving on to Public Works. Public Works is accepting external applications for the engineering technician two, which is an inspector position. Also, the Columbus Avenue Underpass, staff is working with R.E. Warner on a scope of work for two things. One is to develop a list for immediate repairs on Columbus Avenue, and the other is to develop a routine maintenance plan for all of the underpasses, including Columbus Ha, uh, Hayes and Camp Street, to ensure long-term preservation and useful life of each. So those are the, the recently improved underpasses. Also, Commissioner Brady mentioned the sidewalk program that he and Commissioner Waddington have been working with, Aaron and Brad, as well as myself, on pulling together. There will be legislation at the next meeting based on that, that ultimately looks to take the entire list of sidewalks that have currently been reported to the city as uneven. Uh, I believe we do that as more than a half inch when we go out and inspect them. So the basics of it are, we'll be bringing legislation at the next meeting to repair all of those sidewalks, as well as other uneven sidewalks that were not on the repair list, but were adjacent to those in the city. And we'll also look to remove a lot of trees as part of that program, so it'll be a significant investment. Uh, we know that many of the commissioners in the community have been looking for a renewed sidewalk program for the city, and we're excited to roll that out at the next meeting. And, and again, want to thank both our commissioners, all of our commissioners, for their leadership on that issue. Moving on to community development. The city of Sandusky will be hosting a public informational meeting in open house to discuss the potential relocation of City Hall, specific to the administrative component of City Hall. The meeting is set for Tuesday, August sixteenth, from four-thirty to five-thirty P.M. in this building, uh, in, in fact, in this room, in the third floor conference room of the Erie County Administration Building. Uh, we're located at two forty-seven Columbus Avenue. Following the presentation, attendees will have the ability to walk through and tour the Calvary Temple Building located at one fifteen East Washington Row, which is directly across Columbus Avenue from this building, from approximately five-thirty P.M. to six-thirty P.M. So we hope to see many of you there. On Thursday, July twenty-eighth, the city officially transferred the former Keller property at four oh-nine West Water Street to Case Development LLC. The developers currently working on construction drawings for submittal to the city. Uh, there's no specific timeline yet for construction commencing, although the co, the developer is actively marketing the units and will hope to break ground in the near future. Uh, recently, the Division of Code Enforcement has had an influx of cat-related nuisance complaints and has begun to take an active enforcement role to address the nuisance conditions created by irresponsible pet owners and feral cats that constitute a serious hazard to the health, morals, safety, and general warf, welfare of the residents of the city. We have started to place cat traps strategically throughout the city, in areas with high complaints of concentrated domestic cat populations. Trapped domestic cats are being taken to and held at the animal facilities located at the city service complex. Owners of the trapped domestic cats will be criminally charged with animal-at-large violations. Proactively, we're attempting to partner with other agencies to develop a humane plan for the care and/or euthenasi, euthanasia of sick, injured, and feral cats. We're also working with an animal clinic and anticipate that in the near future we'll be able to provide low-cost spay and neuter services to city residents. I also want to thank Commissioner Waddington for his leadership on that issue. He helped pull together a meeting of stakeholders, of city officials, that, that led to some of these actions. Uh, we're also excited to announce, I know this was in the paper, but the city of Sandusky did receive a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar Safe Routes to School grant, uh, that is specifically focused on the Hayes Avenue and Camp Street corridors and, and adjacent sidewalks on side streets, specifically tied to the high school, junior high, and potentially the new three-through-six building, uh, should the voters choose to approve the, uh, school facilities issued this fall. So that'll be a great investment in sidewalks and intersections, as well as biking facilities, uh, that will help to support more students walking and biking to school. Public services and recreation, Huron and Hancock will temporarily be, or have been temporarily converted to a four-way stop. The flashing red lights will transition, uh, to the Huron Ave side of the intersection. I've been watching this closely over the past few days, and it does seem to be working well, uh, but please use caution as it is a change in the traffic. Uh, and Director Link has been working on this issue and, uh, is still actively replacing the existing pole at that light. Will replace it with a, a signal that is similar to what we did at Parrish and Columbus Avenue. So, and Commissioner Poole had a great recommendation on that, that I know Brad agrees with, so we'll be looking to put one of those new, more modern traffic lights at that intersection. Uh, tree ex, experts have finished the two thousand and sixteen tree removal trimming project, uh, and also, as it relates to the recent legislation passed by the commission, uh, no smoking signs are being made and should start to appear near playgrounds in the parks throughout town. And then finally, I just wanted to notify the commission that, uh, we're in the process of discussions with the Erie Metro Parks regarding two properties, uh, one of which is the twenty-seven acres owned predominantly by Cedar Point, north of the Sports Forest site or the Cedar Point Sports Center. Uh, we have, we're in the process of accepting a private donation from Cedar Point to do a master plan for a public park on that site that would include trails, uh, that would be both on that property, but also potentially linking in the future both east to the adjoining Metro Parks properties and west back towards the Sandusky Bay pathway. So the Metro Parks have asked us and Cedar Fair to look at entering into an M.O.U. regarding that site so that we could understand the roles and responsibilities of each of the parties in developing, building, and then ultimately maintaining, uh, that plan. So we'll bring that back to you as soon as, uh, we have something for you to comment on. The Metro Parks have also indicated an interest in being a part of the study for the Sandusky Bay Pavilion property, to see if there may be some role in providing programming, uh, park or facilities on that process, and so we'll be engaging in conversations with them. But ultimately, all of that will come back to the commission before any, uh, recommendations are made. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfser. Commissioners, uh, questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Uh, the American Crayon Building, I'm glad to see they're, uh, getting that knocked down, but what the prob, uh, what's a problem in my mind, we got sheets of plywood, and I think Mr. Brady, you might have seen that in the last week, they're knocking the building down, and some of that stone sitting inside is, I'm worried about kids walking back from school starting in a couple weeks. I'm not an engineer, but maybe someone from staff could go out and see if this was... It looks like they just lined up some plywood along, uh, Hayes Avenue there, up against the building, but my walk on the cleanups, and I looked at that, the office parts not the problem, it's the older portion behind them, the railroad, you know, the trains that, and molding and not molding that area, there, he's knocking that down now, we're getting a lot of stuff out, you know, I just, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, I guess, or have a car get hit. There's enough debris. If anyone cares to walk, I've walked several times on top of the underpass, and stones and glass, all kinds of trash on top. At some point, that's going to...
Uh, through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, we have discussed that with Mr. Pajali with the school district, and I know that Director Lasco was sending, I believe, the building department out there to look at the security of the site. Man, I don't know if there's an update yet on that, but we're looking very closely, particularly before school starts, to see if that needs to be at all secured or even to close the sidewalk on that side of the street before the school year.
No, I would just add through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington's question, we have the ability to order that, either through temporary construction fencing, which may or may not do it. The rest of the site has six-foot construction fencing, specifically separating the two existing properties. I don't know that that's going to do it. So to the city manager's point, what we may likely have to do as they get closer to Hayes is actually shut down a portion of traffic.
Well, they are pretty close to Hayes. Mr. Brady, you...
Yep.
They're pretty close to that, that building, I don't know about the safety, the laws, the security, you know, they put an X on it for a reason, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and I'm just worried about somebody getting hurt or having somebody, you know, a car or kid or something go by and...
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, our chief building official, George Paul, is actually gets back into town tomorrow morning, so we'll make sure he's on site.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Lasco, I, I, I understand that you have a couple options there. I, I think the most preferable one, though, is to, to, for us to visit with the contractor and see that he put in the proper, uh, safety guidelines. I'm concerned about closing off that section of sidewalk and forcing the young people that are walking to school or walking away from school to cross Hayes Avenue and then cross back again. Well, certainly, the first, the first young person that gets, uh, gets hit by a car will kind of be on our shoulders, so I, I think the proper thing to do is, is let's enforce the safety guidelines that, that our contractor there should be, should be adhering to, and, and let's see where that goes with that. Uh, your fallback position is certainly to close it off, but I think that should really be a fallback position. Agreed.
For while it's actually being constructed or not, I should say, but I think we probably try to minimize that as much as possible, both traffic and.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
If I may, if I do a follow-up on, like Tiffany, you're on the pass, go up on top, there's a lot of stone, Dick, you've been up there. A lot of stones, glass, triangles, but I'm standing there and I'm watching it fall. Is that our responsibility or is it where it is?
I can, I can look into it. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, we've, we've been through that a couple times, and for, I don't mean to be bashing the railroad, but we're never very successful at getting the railroad to do what I think the railroad should be doing, and that is maintaining their property. And so we continue to labor that effect, but we can't get them to unblock a crossing, let alone clean up, you know, clean up the overpasses. It's, it might be worth a phone call and get on record anyway that we have an issue with that.
Look into it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I suggest we talked about several things here. The construction site itself, where they're tearing down the building, I think was a portion of this. The normal traffic walking down the sidewalk, going back and forth to school. I just want to point out that we should be doing what is reasonable. If you need, think you need to close the sidewalk, that's fine. If you think the wall's going to collapse and you have reason to believe that, but just recognize as a child who grew up around these, this city, you cannot keep kids off of construction sites. You may chase them off later, but don't try and come up with million-dollar security plans that are designed to, I don't want one child to get his foot cut in a construction site. You put up a reasonable fence, police patrol it periodically, but let's recognize that kids are going to get their bicycles on dirt piles, and unless you have, put a guard on it, you can't stop it. So let's not have unrealistic expectations about what we actually can accomplish.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Mr. Poole, I guess what I'm saying, we got plywood, correct, Dick? They just lined up against the building when they knocked the top down, and some of it's getting out from that barrier. I guess not to say it's not a fence actually, but I just don't want to see that if they're knocking something three stories high and up on the sidewalk.
I'm not suggesting that anything that you brought up shouldn't be taken care of. I just want to point out, let's not get wrapped around the axle, because unless you're standing there guarding, kids will climb the fence, find a way to get around, and they get on sites that you otherwise, that might be considered dangerous. And just recognize that we have some limitations going in before you do this.
Okay, we're still under the city manager's report.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Mr. Wolfser, as far as monitoring things around town, are we keeping, I talked to you about that a few weeks back, projects like the American Crayon, who's the staff person that we have?
For specifically American Crayon?
Kind of.
So, American.
I mean, they're, they're moving along pretty good now, but.
Yeah. So for, for any project, depending on the department, through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, depending on the department, there's usually a point person, and so American Crayon being a demolition has been predominantly Mr. Lasco and the building department working on that and pulling in other departments as necessary. But for each, you know, each other project, depending on, you know, whether it's an infrastructure project, a service project, et cetera, it would ultimately be the department director. And I know Matt has been working closely with the law department on following American Crayon as closely as possible. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, I mean, specifically for American Crayon, we have George Poole and Steve Brown do periodic checks, which is just part of the permitting process and their demolition plan. But to the city manager's point, I guess it would depend on the type of project, whether we're dealing with a private demolition that's generally going to go through our building division and our building official.
Mr. Wolfser.
Follow-up on, like the sidewalks, the trees, I don't think we mentioned the trees as much. When I went out, you met us out there, Brad met us out there. On, we started out on one city street, and then Mr. Poole brought up a different area of town. So we're looking at all the areas. It's not going to be designated in one area, so I hope that points really on, we're going to knock the trees down, take, cut them down.
Yeah, through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington.
Because I didn't plant the trees, they're like forty feet high buckeye trees, they're pushing sidewalks up eight, ten inches. I don't want, it's a safety issue, I guess.
The sidewalk legislation that you'll consider at the second meeting in August is very comprehensive. It includes a significant amount, I want to say seventy trees, is that, one hundred and forty? Two hundred and ten?
It's over two hundred.
Over two hundred? I knew, I knew it was a significant, it's more trees than we took down in our tree expert contract this year, because we are, to your point, when we're replacing the sidewalk, we will remove trees. We're also looking long-term at a plan to replace street trees, because we know that's critically important. But it'll be a very big piece of legislation with a large, large sidewalk list that includes where appropriate tree removal. And it's, to your point, it's over two hundred trees. Two forty, I think, is the number, is I?
Right now, it's a hundred and eighty-eight trees.
Okay, okay. So I saw it once, I promise.
I've been working on this. We went out there, I felt bad, we were on Waverly, and we saw what, six, seven, eight inch high, some of the sidewalks raised up. And then, again, if you're walking at night and trip over, who's responsible? I just felt like, that's one of the reasons I ran, to be, you know, loud in the neighborhood and communities, talk to people, just sit here, okay? And I thought that was important, to get feedback, and we left there that we'd get back within thirty days. I felt bad about that. I honestly was going to go back and say, hey, we can't do nothing right now.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, I, too, you know, I walk around the city a great deal, but Waverly, and when you took us out there, and I know places like Gartland, et cetera, that we've been called out to, the extreme examples where there is usually a tree, you know, root that's driving those way up, it's obviously a major challenge. And we do absolutely believe that, that this will be the largest sidewalk repair and tree removal related to sidewalks that the city has made in quite a significant amount of time. So we're taking it very seriously, and we know that this won't cure every sidewalk defect in the city, and that while we're able to address every complaint, and also a lot of problems adjacent to those complaints that have not been called in, we're sure that list will grow for next year. And ultimately, our hope is to continue to make significant investments in the sidewalks each and every year, based on the feedback that we've gotten from the commission and that the commission has gotten from the community, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wolfser, I think it's fair to point out at this point also that, that this is
such a comprehensive plan, that our, our plan and staff is taking this very seriously, is going to, we're going to attack the trees now. If we pass this legislation, if our fellow commissioners agree and we pass this legislation, we're going to attack the trees this fall. We're going to get the trees out of the way this fall, and we're going to be pouring new sidewalks next spring. That makes sense, and so our residents don't have some misconception that they're getting new sidewalks this fall. We're going to get rid of the, the reason that the sidewalks are heaving are the trees. We're going to get rid of the trees first, we're going to pour concrete next, next fall and make every one of our neighbors that much, that much safer to walk.
Further questions or comments for the city manager? I do think that sidewalk program is incredibly important, because we have all of the hallmarks of being a great walkable city. We've got great parks, we've got great neighborhoods, we've got great downtown, great waterfront, but if we can't connect them all with sidewalks, it's not very walkable. And I think it's great that we finally have the resources to be able to get back on top of this, and I think, Mr. Waddington in particular, for his leadership to make sure that we stay focused where we need to stay focused. Further questions or comments for the city manager? Otherwise, we'll turn to items of old business. Anyone having any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I don't want to be taking up too much time, but I'd like at some point to get with you, or maybe Mr. Brady, or another commissioner if you're interested, with Green Energy again, not so much the new city hall, but we've got a lot of area at the water plants, their plants, solar panels have made a big leap from when we put, when we put them on, what, old six or old seven at the greenhouse. The eyes got a lot smaller. It might be some, I would like to look at that. We've got plenty of space out there that's fenced in. They put, look at solar panels, that's, you know, reduce the energy cost down, water and sewer plant. And then the lighting, I know at the schools, I changed the T-12s, T-8s, that saves money to change ballast without. We had started that program, it's T-8 bump, we had started that program when I left, and they did the water sewer plant, we walked around, the light would come on, go off, we did some stuff with the doors. Is there more we can do? I don't want to sit in our heels and wait here or two, and if we do build a new city hall, is it something that we can do, you know, think about now, really plan?
Mr. Waddington, my recollection, as I was on the commission, the commission was here last time when we did that, is there was an outside firm that came in and gave us recommendations, and then there was some form of funding, and I can't quite remember the specifics of.
Yeah, we got the state, uh, she's back in my home, we had, I'm doing that. So we got about half of the base of the states at the time. But it's a different ballgame now. It's a great learning, too, at the greenhouse, I'm glad we saved it, that's it. I, I think it's fabulous, great. You remember the windows were released in eighteen, we talked about closing them down ten years ago. And now look at it today, you know, it's, it's like, oh. So it's just something about water sewer plant, could we do some solar, the wind turbines, I just think it's out right now with the thirty minutes, so solar's more realistic, we can look at that.
No moving parts either. It's pretty simple. Well, I guess, I'll echo all of that, and I, and I hope that, that Mr. Wolfser, you and your department has continued to look at those opportunities as they become available. I think it's, I think what we're trying to do is express the will of the commission that we do want to be a green city, at least a couple of us are expressing that, I mean, just keep calling them. But Mr. Waddington and I are saying that, as we said years ago, that I think it's important for us to be able to attract residents to our community, that we show that we're doing things efficiently and that we're doing things in a smart way, recognizing that our footprint has an impact on the world, and we want to be smart about that.
Yep. Just through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, I do believe that we can take a closer look at different green initiatives, particularly as it relates to facilities. I know, as many of you know, we were selected for a federal program as one of two cities on the Great Lakes to look at green infrastructure as it relates to our stormwater and sewer systems, and that that process is going to begin this year and continue through the neighborhood plan. As far as facilities, we have been most focused on the city hall and Justice Center projects so we can start immediately in looking at what type of green infrastructure can be tied to those facilities. But one of the things that I know Erin and I have talked closely about is, immediately upon locking in the long-term plan, whichever the commission chooses for those two buildings, we'd like to take a look. We believe those are the only two new municipal facilities that we'll need likely in the, in the near term. So we want to take a look at all those existing facilities, of which we have thirteen total, counting the city hall facility in the city. So those other eleven are something that as soon as we get through this process of, say, the next six months of deciding at the commission level what you want to do about city hall and the Justice Center, we can start to plan for 2017 as to how we analyze the needs of the remaining eleven facilities that the city owns, including the water plant, sewer plant, greenhouse, et cetera. And ultimately, I think we could probably do so with an emphasis on what type of green infrastructure can be used, sort of not only to rehabilitate those to the extent necessary to keep them viable, but also to reduce our energy footprint at those buildings in the process. Erin, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
We have a few things we're looking at at the wastewater treatment plant, but those are things that right now, we just don't have the time to analyze the proposals we've received and the ideas that have come forward. So we're, we're hoping to look at those and be able to find the time to put the effort needed, but there are many things like that that we are considering. We've done the demand response and other things like that, but the initiatives that you're talking about are certainly things that are on the priority list.
Further items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I just want to say that I'm in support of everything we just talked about being green, and while we're on that subject, if we could maybe continue to look at recycling in the parks and our, with our trash contracts coming up next March, just continue to recycle around the city.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if this is old or new business, but I do.
We're on the line.
That's why, that's why I thought this was going to be a good point. I do want to circle back to something that I said earlier about term limits, and actually, you asked me a question about it when I said it, the elimination of term limits could potentially negatively impact minority communities. I was born and raised here in Sandusky, small community. We have, when I decided to run for a commission, to be honest, I was a little concerned about, I ran with Dick and Dennis, also a few others. But I was a little worried about running, because I wasn't sure how my campaign and people would potentially see me as opposed to men in the community who are very well-known, not knowing, you know, again, how people would view me or see me. So when I say that the elimination of term limits could negatively impact minority communities, what I'm saying is, a lot of times, we look at things from our own perspective, the community and the environment that we grew up in, and sometimes we are intimidated by those things that might be a, a big challenge. So, and I don't want elimination of term limits to become a black and white issue. I just wanted to further expound what I mean when I say that the elimination of term limits could potentially negatively impact minorities who might want to run for a commission. I think that council and commission duties are, are good things for people of communities that want to get involved. I also believe that term limits allow those that want to get involved to have a potential pathway forward to the electoral process within their communities. So I just kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit. I, it, it's, it's almost uncomfortable for me to talk about black and white issues, but I cover three of the protected class areas that the EEOC covers. I'm African-American, I'm black, and I'm over forty. So I just kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit more, because I think it is important for people to note, especially again, in smaller communities, minorities are thinking about pursuing areas of interest that they may be intimidated by.
Ms. Twine, all I have to say in response, two things. One, I was with you and understanding everything you mentioned, and have found your integrity and your credibility to be impeccable, but when you said that, claimed that you're over forty, I mean, that's convincing. The, the second thing that I would like to say is that I was indeed intimidated by running with you, because you, at the time, were the smartest person who was willing to throw their hat into the ring, and Mr. Brady and I.
Hey, I'm here. I'm right next to you.
And, and I, and I'm glad that you're here. I don't know that I share your perspective. We hadn't talked about it before tonight. I will do my own research to the extent that I can, because when you raise a concern, it's always important to make sure that I understand what that is, so.
And I don't know that there's any research that's available out there. Again, I'm looking from, from my perspective, from other minorities that I know that I've talked to, so, you know, we can do the research, but what I, what I'm saying again is that I'm encouraging people not to allow what appears to be a limitation to prevent them from, from pursuing something.
Other items of old business or new business? I do need to set a, here, Mrs. Kresser, is this one I just set, or we need to vote? I was setting this hearing on the second urban renewal plan and light study.
A motion for a public hearing.
Okay. So I would appreciate if one of my colleagues would make a motion to set the hearing for September 12th regarding the second urban renewal plan and light study.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, all in favor? I'm sorry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That hearing is set. And then I, Mr. Brady.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a motion for one executive session regarding the sale of real estate.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion to set the executive session?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That executive session is set. I did want to say that I had an opportunity Friday before last to do a ride-along with some Sandusky's finest, and I was just really educated by it. I know the opportunity has been put in front of me for years, and I was waiting for the right opportunity, and I found the right opportunity, and I'm going to say that I'm going to work a lot harder to make more right opportunities, because when I saw what these men and women do out there, I was amazed and impressed. We read about these issues that are so important to, to all of our communities across the United States, but to see in action what these folks do to deal with some of the challenges that our community faces, some of the issues that some of our residents face, to do so in a compassionate way, to do so in a way that de-escalates the situation, the, the level of skill and training was truly remarkable to me. The camaraderie among all the officers and those in command that evening was, was remarkable. And I found some of the interactions between some of the folks out in the community and the police duty remarkable. Good interactions, respectful interactions, even when people were apprehended, they were, they were dealt with respect, they responded by and large with respect. I mean, no one wants to be apprehended, of course, but it's, it's, I just wanted to share that perspective with all of you and give you a sense of what I learned from my experience and if any of you find an opportunity to do so, I think you'd find it fascinating. Gives you a much better insight into what these folks do. The number and speed of decisions that have to be made is unlike anything I have to do in my work, and the fact that we usually get it right, almost always get it right, is amazing to me. So hats off to the chief to you and all of your officers for providing that opportunity and for the work that I saw demonstrate that evening. Any other items of old or new business? Then we'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please step to the podium. Those folks who are presenting may wish to have a microphone back and share with us your name and your concerns, thoughts.
Okay. Hi, Vicki Byrd, 2114 Wilbert Street. Wow. That's a little loud. I don't even think I need that. I want to ask a little question. Two years ago, of our city commissioners, those people sitting here, people sitting here, I see new faces, I see old faces. I want to know why issue eight even came to be. Can somebody please here explain that to me? What the catalyst to that was and the purposes of it? As I sit here today and see that Station Firehouse Seven is closed, going to be closed, is closed, has been closed, so that means the West End residents have no fire department open for a period of time. I realize that a union contract, which you cannot discuss here, I get that, I respect that, trust me. You're not allowed to say anything, tell us anything. I'm upset, I want to read a few things. People that live on the West Side need to speak up. Maybe it might be a little bit different if the entire West Side were standing here today behind me instead of just me, because I've been fighting for this for over two years, and that was what rebuilt Sandusky started for, part of the reason, aside from sidewalks, trees, streets, rehabilitation basically of their city. And the most important thing is our safety services, our fire department, and most importantly, or as important, our police department. It is closed due to staffing, there's a union contract that is not settled, I really don't know what the problem is, but I'm certainly hoping, and it's my understanding, we have to wait until August? to wait until August for a mediator, or whatever you call them, to come in and hopefully you can all decide what you're gonna do and what your decision's gonna be made. In the meantime, we have nursing homes on the West End, you run a risk, my elderly parents live on the West End, I live on the West End, quite a few people live on the West End. Can I not pay my taxes? Can you take a little bit out of my city taxes for a while that is closed? Would that be fair for me to ask? Would it?
Ms. Byrd, as you rightly point out, while we can't comment on the negotiations with the fire department, firefighters, I should say, I am informed that, that one of the reasons for the short staffing and the temporary closure today of Station Seven, which I understand was reopened at some point this afternoon, is that there was an open position on the fire department, and that position is in the process of being filled, and Mr. Whipster indicated that we believe that additional firefighters could be joining us in the next week or two, I don't know the exact timing on that.
A, a, a new hire?
Yes.
A new firefighter? One firefighter?
Yes.
Is that gonna help with the staffing and no more closing of Firehouse Seven? Because that's the one that always gets closed. One doesn't get closed, five doesn't get closed, we get closed.
Chief, is there anything you, like, wanted to add something?
Sure. And I understand your concern with that as well, currently, right now, I have one person that's out on military leave all year long, I had unfortunate injuries for some of my firefighters off duty, so, at one point, I was out, down six firefighters, due to injuries or military leave, I, one just came back off the military, so, threw no fault, oh, I mean, it just, it happens, it happened that way, so, we were offering overtime to the firefighters, and the reason why the Station Seven was closed today is because on that, the ship is working today, I have four people, two on, on time off, that's union allotted time off for Cali days and for vacation, and then I had another individual that was injured, he won't be back till early as the end of September, and then another individual on military leave, he's on military all year long, so, at that point, we offer overtime to cover, and in the summertime, what we found is that we don't get any coverage during the day, and I can't mandate that people come in, per the contract, and so they'll come in at seven o'clock at night to work, seven in the morning, so I adjusted a, a bit to, to have companies, so we can keep all three stations open, and so today, though, they were able to fill the two at night, not the two in, in the morning, so, that is why Station Seven was closed for, for, well, actually, somebody came in at two o'clock.
Okay.
And opened it back up.
I understand that, I get that. What I wanna get at is, to this city, whatever it takes to get your contract negotiated, so that we have enough firefighters hired, not working overtime, although I'm sure they love working overtime, who doesn't like overtime, but in your field, that's a dangerous thing in your field, Chief Orzek, it's a dangerous thing. I'd like to see it staffed so that all three of our firehouses can stay open, and your West End of Sandusky, the little redheaded stepchild, has the protection it pays for through our own city taxes, that is, that's one of the purposes I worked for two years ago, and here we are back at the same thing. It's, and it, why is it always the fire department? Why do we get shorted on the fire depart, the fire department? You just had another arson fire prob, possibly, I shouldn't say that, it's not, you had an arson fire, you just had another house burned down that affected three. I just, please, I'm not sure where the problem's lying, I don't know if it's in the fire department, your union, I'm just telling you as a citizen and a resident of the city, and you missed, all of you sitting up here, please, do what you need to do to get a contract negotiated, that's taken, what, over three years? You've not had a negotiated contract for a long time, and it's affecting the way you're operating as a fire department, it's affecting the protection of this city, and I did not wanna be here this long talking about this. But I worked really hard a long time ago, I just want everybody to remember how we even got to issue eight and what the purposes were for, and respect that, because that took a lot of work, and I'm not asking for anything that anybody should ask for, protection and safety from this city, from all areas of it, and I appreciate it and I respect it, because I know what you do, and I know what you do, I understand it. Thank you for the opportunity to vote for whether or not you ought to get three terms, because I think that should go to the voters, and I think that will be determined upon how you come through with your five-year vision plan on down the road and everything, as to whether or not people are gonna vote to give you twelve years. To me, I wouldn't have a problem saying yeah, as long as I know you're gonna progress and do the things that you say you're gonna do, so that extra money that we were given, please use it for what it was intended for, if it means more firefighters, please put it where it's supposed to be, don't misuse funds out of the fire department or any other water department, whatever the case may be, give us what we're asking for, what we've gone to the polls for, because if you do that, I'll vote for you every time, and it don't matter what color you are, because I see a more diverse city commission sitting here than I have in ten years that I've been paying attention. You, Ms. Twine, you, Mr. Lockhart, you, Nikki Lloyd, two women at the same time, you, Mr. Poole, three people of color, that might've been unheard of a while ago, twenty years ago, twenty-five, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, but I don't vote for you, because I vote for what you say you can and will support and do, the best thing for this city, to move forward and get to where you wanna get, get to where we wanna get, get to where we don't have to worry about closing off Columbus Ave, or, I'm sorry, Hayes Ave, so our kids can walk to school, they're high schoolers, get some street guards out and help them cross the street, this side, that side, figure out another route so nobody gets killed, and you're never gonna stop kids from getting on construction sites, no you're not, but if it's closed off enough and people are paying attention, you can catch the kids scaling the fences. Mackenzie's not here, I hope to speak, I really came here for one reason only, and that was the bicentennial, I would like to think, hopefully, give me one more minute, I was speaking with Willie McCarty from our Native American heritage here in the city of Sandusky, we're talking about a parade, I think it would be a really cool idea of somewhere along the line, whether it be in the month of June, July, or August, or September, the homecoming parade, to incorporate the true heritage of our city, and how far back it goes, even before the American Revolution started, before the British and the French were here, before Fort Sandusky was burned down, before our US forces took Lake Erie, and that's the only reason the city of Sandusky is here, and there were settlers, I mean, do our children even know the history of where we live? Because I'm really proud of it, I mean, it makes me excited, it makes me happy, a lot of it is lost, and it, I would, I could see nothing other than a huge community parade involving everybody, starting with our Native American Indians, starting with our veterans, leading the way with their police force, with our fire department, and behind you the children, because that's the, that's the future of this city, and their little battery-operated cars, on their bicycles, decorated, you can have all kinds of fine things, fun things downtown, art walk, do whatever, music, any time you want, where? Shade Mylander, Mr. Mylander left us with a beautiful piece of land to celebrate, and we do it for other things, so how about as a community, a large community, instead of neighborhood, we can still have neighborhood block parties, but how about one big community parade? The only big parade we really have is a late, or a Memorial Day parade, that's it, and that just comes down, that doesn't come downtown, that's not in the city of Sandusky, that stops before dinners, you know, you want people to come here? Do what we need to do to provide our services for us, so, yeah, I don't ask for anything more than that, but I know if I call the fire department, I'm not gonna have to hear, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a longer response time, had it not been, your father might not have passed, your mother, your brother, your sister, your child, whoever, so, I'm just asking you to do what's right, what's best, for the city as a whole, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission?
Hello, everyone, my name is Sandy Delamater, I live at twelve thirteenth Fifth Street in Sandusky, I guess I should've asked you, Mr. Whipster, when you were speaking about the feral cats and the cats that are left, that, is that gonna be a neuter and release program that you're looking into?
So, yeah.
Yeah, it's not to kill them?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a release.
There's sort of several elements to it, the killing of what I would call euthanasia, euthanasia is only for those that, you know, are sick and are, you know, diseased, but for the most part, what it is, is a capture release, at the same time, for also the estimated year program.
It's wonderful.
As well, so I think there's several elements to address the problem, depending on the type of property or the type of animals that are captured, so, I guess I will.
And, and also, thank you, sir, also, Officer, the Goddard's Law is gonna be into effect, I think it's September thirteenth, I'm sure that all the officers will be up on, on that, correct, then? Okay, thank you, and I wanna thank Dave and Mr. Brady, I thank you about the water slide, or whatever the water project you're into for MacArthur Park area, the sprinkler system, thank you for bringing that up last meeting, I wasn't here, but I was told about it, and I would like to thank Mr. Waddington for showing up that last at MacArthur Park for Faith Memorial Church, and I appreciate that, we do, and that's it, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Delamater. Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission? Then we will take a short recess and resume with our second session.